Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council Workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Are we good to go?
Joining us.
Okay. Good afternoon, welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of October 24, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Attendance roll call, Councilmember Aldama.
President.
Councilmember Hugh.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
President.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Vice Mayor Clark.
Here.
And the chairman's present. Do take note of that, please. Workshop session, Ms. Bauer, would you enter your item number one for us?
Bonzel Park North Master Plan Design Concept.
Mayor, members of the council, here to present our first item today are Heidi Boriga and John Kennedy from Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk to you today about Bonzel Park North Master Plan Design Concept. So here what we have is an aerial view of existing conditions of Bonzel Park, which of course is at 59th Avenue and Bethany Home Road. So we started working with our consultant to perform and understand the historic precedent, site inventory analysis, and recent improvements of Bonzel Park. This served as the basis of creating this conceptual plan that we're going to go through today. So here's a high-level review of what the concept plan recommends, and we'll get into a little bit more details in some future slides. But what you're looking at on this slide, in the red color, is areas within the park that's recommended to remove some of the park amenities. The yellow sections are areas in the park that's recommended to renovate like-for-like amenities. And then finally, in the green highlighted sections, those areas are to protect in place. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Heidi Boriga, our deputy director, to take us through the next few slides.
Good afternoon, and it's a pleasure being here. Thank you for having me. I wanted to show you some concepts that we have for the Bonzel Park North area. And what John was just saying about the what will be removed, what will be renovated, and what will be protected, I'll go over that with you. And you can follow on this map with real small writing that you have in front of you. What will be removed are the roller hockey court, the racquetball courts, the volleyball courts, and the fencing concrete around the F-100 aircraft display. What we're going to renovate, the tennis courts and the basketball courts. What will be protected are the new pickleball courts, the actual aircraft display, the restroom building, the playground area, and the historic drive with palm trees. You'll see on this map lots of numbers, and associated with that, I did want to point out a few things. Item number four, which is passive turf, that area really creates great open space for families to come hang out, play some sports, have a picnic. We are doing a mini pitch area you'll see as well. And we are revitalizing the F-18 display and walk up to it, and you'll see some diagrams of that in a next slide. Again, this is just what I went over, what will be removed, what will be renovated, and what will be protected. On this diagram here, you'll see we have added a number of access points to the park, a lot of ways people can get in safely into the park area. We also are going to draw new members to the park by creating a walking loop. And along this walking loop, you'll see we have four fitness stations as well. And this to me is really the highlight of the project, this aircraft display in creating what looks like a landing pad or a runway in the front and in the back of the aircraft. And this really hopefully creates the opportunity for families to come and make memories, little kids with their airplanes wanting to come back to that airplane park. And with that, I'll turn it back to John.
Great, thank you, Heidi. So to go over the available budgeted funds consists of a little bit more than $2.4 million. It comes from the three CIP projects that you see listed there for Bonzel Park improvements, the irrigation project, and listed in the CIP program is the mentions Bonzel Park Splash Pad. This is a re-scoping for other park amenities identified in this conceptual design. So the probable cost estimate at this point is just preliminary. It goes with the design aspect, and the estimate is a little bit more than $2.9 million. If and when we go to construction drawings and go through some other further enhancements, this number certainly could change. And if any gap continues to exist as we get further down the line, then we would certainly come back to council with further considerations. So with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. It's been a long time due for this park. Several months ago, I met with Ms. Rios and Mr. Burke, and we talked about the items in red that are titled as "remove." Can you talk a little bit about the community outreach that Mr. Burke and Ms. Rios and I talked about that was going to happen, or maybe gonna happen? Can you talk about that if you're aware of it?
Yes, mayor, council, councilmember Aldama.
And I have a follow-up question.
Absolutely. So yes, we did perform a specific survey with targeted user groups of the park, mainly focusing on the racquetball courts. And the feedback and data that we received showed support for the removal of the racquetball courts. In addition to that outreach, this was also run through the Parks and Recreation Commission as well.
Thank you. I wanted just those who are watching to understand that it's not just being removed, it was input, and it was valued. Second question is, when the three of us met, the only part of the project that wasn't in the funding request, and maybe it is now, was it was absent of upgraded LED lighting or lighting. Is that in this project, or to be expected, or not to be expected?
Mayor and councilmember Aldama, yes, lighting is incorporated in this project.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
My question I have for you is, the picture on page eight shows runway 73.
59.
Can you tell me what that is?
Mayor, members of council, that's a great question. I know I had the answer at one point in time, and I am totally blanked on it at the moment.
Okay, so the reason I bring that up is there is no such thing as a runway 73. It's actually compass headings, and you subtract the last zero. So if you were landing due east, instead of 90 degrees, it would be runway nine. If you're landing straight south, it would be runway 27, not 270. That airplane face is due west, and so if that was the runway that it was on, it would be runway 18, or it would be runway nine. Now, that may not make a bit of difference to anybody, but if you get pilots out there, they're going to notice that really quick. If there's a significance of the 73, maybe that's when the jet was put out there on display or something, maybe. But I think if you want to keep an aviation theme and a runway and all that, I would suggest maybe you use the proper runway headings for what it's worth. Did you have a question?
I did, thank you, mayor. Is this on? I guess it is. I have a couple of questions. The restrooms, I know that has been in the past a concern about the restrooms and kind of how they're located, and it's sort of in a hard-to-see area. So what is part of this plan to make sure that we provide line of sight and safety around the restrooms?
Mayor, members of council, councilmember Tomachoff. The restroom building was replaced within the last year or so, and the location is near the parking lot in the southeast, near the southeast corner. You know, we are having some challenges with some vandalism to the locking mechanisms. Other than that, they've been working very well as a newer amenity.
Okay. And then my other question is, that shows the Bonzel Park Splash Pad, actually, that project's identified as small splash pads in the CIP, not Bonzel Park Splash Pad. And I believe that it is showing small splash pads at half a million dollars. So is this the only splash pad that's being constructed under small splash pads, or are there other splash pads planned under that line in the CIP?
Mayor and councilmember Tomachoff, yes, in the CIP, there was a small splash pad C designated, and this is that small splash pad C. As for the plans for the other various splash pads throughout the city, something I don't have all the information on right now today, but we'd be glad to get back to you with more information on laying out all the splash pad information.
Okay, I sent an email last week asking like, where are they planned, where are they being considered? I don't think we ever finished the conversation of where we were going with the situation with water, what are actual, I don't think we ever actually came up with an answer of what the city wanted to do, whether we were going to go ahead with SRP water splash pads and not with CAP. I'm not sure where we ended up, so I was a little curious. So this, just back to the, this was the only splash pad? It wasn't identified as Bonzel Park, but it was small splash pads, but that was all for this project?
There were, mayor, councilmember Tomachoff, there were three small splash pads identified labeled as A.
So we got three of them for $500,000?
No, they were each, there was an A, B, and C, and they were each $500,000.
Oh, okay, they were all separate. Okay, that's why it was confusing, because they were all the same. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, mayor. This is a wonderful project. Thank you. Bonzel Park has been around for a very long time and has basically not had a major upgrade in years, so I am just delighted. I think this will be a fantastic project. The sooner you can get it done, the better. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may, you made excellent points on the runway. We will definitely get back with our consultant, and we'll work through those ideas and make sure that those items are taken into consideration.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor. We have, can we clarify something, please, on something that was said I think is maybe inaccurate? So Vicki, if you could.
Yes, mayor, members of the council, just so we clear the record, make sure it's straight. When we showed this slide from the budget, we're taking $500,000 from that line that had small splash pads, but there isn't a splash pad proposed for this park. So we're using some of that money and reprogramming it to some of these other amenities. So there is no planned splash pad in this master plan for Bonzel. Just wanted to make sure we understood that.
What do you need from us?
We are looking for consensus for us to move forward. Mayor?
For consensus, move forward.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Naming of new park at 55th Avenue and Northern formerly Glen Lakes Golf Course.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is our Parks Director, Jim Burke. Nope, up.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to be here to talk about the naming of the park site formerly known as Glen Lakes Golf Course. As you know, this facility is located at 55th Avenue and Northern. The development started, then paused, and has since been restarted. Some good progress is being made. They appear to be on target for a winter season completion date. Upon completion, there's an approximate 10, 10.7 acre park site that will be opened back up. This particular park site is designed to have a totlot play area, some park benches and pet stations, a free play grass area, a 10-foot concrete trail, as well as some landscaping amenities. So it's been a little while since Glendale's opened up a new park to name, so the staff has looked at the naming policy, refreshed it, and really want to go over two options for the council to consider on naming this particular park. So first option, council could give staff direction on the name, i.e. Glen Lakes Park, Trevino Park, something along those lines. The next steps after that would be we would go to the Parks Commission, go through that process, and then bring it back to city council for final approval. Or option two, staff could facilitate the process of a community outreach to gather names, to present both to the Parks and Recreation Commission and the council, with ultimately the council having final approval. So really short and sweet. Be glad to answer questions on anything you might have.
Mayor.
Yeah, one second. I personally think if we left at Glen Lakes, I think that would make the most sense. But I do really believe that the Parks Commission should actually lead that conversation. But again, I don't know why I would want to change a name when that's what it's known for. But again, I would support the Parks Commission leading that. Okay, now your turn.
Unbelievable. You took the words right out of my mouth on both accounts.
I had it scripted right here.
All right, well, staff's on the ball over there in your office, I'll tell you. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. It's been so long since we've talked about this. Refresh my memory. So the perimeter, basically what's going to be the park, kind of a linear horseshoe kind of a thing, that is, was dedicated back to the city? They purchased the whole thing and then dedicated that back? I don't remember how this all transpired. This is city-owned property, the park?
Mayor, members of council, yes, that's my understanding, and they're in the process of going through the development of it, and we're involved in inspecting the work and the improvements that they're making in the park.
Does anybody know? I mean, so I think the transaction was they purchased the entire parcel and then dedicated this portion back to us? Is that, I just don't, it's been a couple of years, and I just don't remember.
Mayor, members of the council, excuse me, councilmember Tomachoff, that is correct.
Okay.
They bought the entire parcel, they've gone through the development process, the zoning, and they're building the subdivision. When they're complete with the park improvements, they'll rededicate that to the city as a city park and expect that this winter, as John mentioned.
Okay.
And then it's our policy to have the council name the new park.
Okay, I just couldn't remember how it works. So, okay, thank you. By the way, I agree with councilmember Turner and the mayor on the Parks Commission.
Mayor, is Mr. Burke still up?
I'm sorry?
I had a question for Mr. Burke, but I can, just for clarity, and I'm not hearing him off today, so if you said it and I missed it, I apologize, but my recollection is they dedicate back to the city a completed park.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's why it hasn't happened yet to go to councilmember Tomachoff's question. They will dedicate it to us when they're complete.
Yeah, it will be pre-scape furnished, it'll have the play equipment, it'll be turnkey to us when it comes back, irrigation, the whole routine.
That's correct, councilman.
Yeah, and just in case others may not remember, this city park actually serves as the water retention area for the subdivision as well, so the taxpayer citywide will be taking care of that neighborhood's water retention needs. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Historically, we have used option two, and I prefer that we continue to do that and give the community, the surrounding community, the opportunity to weigh in. I too like Glen Lakes, but what I like doesn't matter, it's what the community would prefer this park to be called, so I support option two. Thank you.
No other discussion? Can you guys turn the volume up a little bit? The sound is not great today. If you guys will do that, perfect. Okay, if there's no further discussion, yeah, what you need? Option two?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm actually not sure we do have what we need. We need a consensus from the council as to whether you want us to go with option one or you want us to go with option two. So I heard some of each, and so I need to know which you want staff. Do you want us to go to the community? Do you want us to go suggest the name Glen Lakes Park?
I believe that was decided, but I'll ask again for your clarity. Option two, is that good with everybody?
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Through the commission.
Through the commission and a public outreach?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Item three.
Council item of special interest firefighter cancer legislation.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on this next item is Ryan Lee, our Director of Intergovernmental Programs, who I don't see. So mayor, maybe I recommend we go, he may have been tied up for something, maybe go to the next item, and then we can conclude with that.
Downtown campus reinvestment project update.
Item four.
Yes, mayor, members of council, here to provide staff report on item number four, led by Jesse Peterson, Director of Economic Development, and Daniel Sabillon, our Deputy Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good afternoon, mayor and council. We're happy to be here to provide this month's DCRP update, so the downtown campus reinvestment project, and specifically to share our current and ongoing efforts to support the downtown business community during this project. As Mr. Phelps mentioned, I am joined by Daniel Sabillon today, who has served as the city's liaison for all things downtown since August of 2022, and continues to serve as the point of contact for our downtown community. Here's an overview of the key components to our business support plan that we're presenting today, and I am going to go into detail on each of them, just wanted to give a quick shot of what those all look like. So first is the direct business assistance and training workshops. In January of this year, we contracted with Local First Arizona to begin providing tailored workshops and one-on-one technical assistance to prepare our downtown businesses for the construction phase of the DCRP. Local First is the largest coalition of independently owned businesses in the United States. And here in the state of Arizona, they've been a leader for a very long time, providing this type of support to small businesses. Local First also has specific background and experience helping businesses through major construction projects, and they're also a trusted organization in our downtown with several of our downtown businesses being members themselves. Their leadership has also been engaged in our local community with merchant meetings they've attended. They've also provided and hosted networking events at our businesses in downtown for several years. So we saw success with the first contract that we started in January, and we can share that all of the designated technical assistance hours in that contract, which was 150 hours to be specific, have been utilized already. And again, the opportunity to use that technical assistance and to attend all of the workshops have been provided to all of our downtown businesses. So to continue the momentum that Local First has been building here with us in downtown, as we move into the construction phase of the DCRP, we do plan to enter into a new agreement with Local First Arizona. And there on the slide, you can see that that agreement would continue with more technical assistance hours, additional tailored workshops. Again, those workshops start to focus on things that are very particular to our businesses to help them succeed during a construction phase of a project like this. And it will also include Local First's award-winning Small Wonders map that we'll share a little bit more on one of the future slides in the presentation. Another way we plan to assist our business community here during the DCRP is to utilize the fence around the campus. So a construction fence will go around the campus, and the scrim or the fabric that covers that fence is going to be used in several ways. So we plan to use that to provide wayfinding to businesses in downtown, to promote our merchants with the opportunity for them to feature their logos at a nominal cost throughout the entire phase of the project and all of construction. We'll also use it to honor the history of the downtown campus. We heard from our downtown merchant community that the history was very important of this campus, and so there will be a timeline included on there. And then we're also going to use it to provide contact information for project inquiries and drive the public to the DCRP webpage to track the project as well. On this next slide, you'll see just a conceptual of what that looks like when we put graphics up on that scrim. And again, this is just conceptual, but we continue to work with Oakland Construction on the project to maximize the use of that fence. We thought that was really, really important to help everyone understand that downtown is open for business. So on this next slide, we also want to talk about downtown events. As we shared in our workshop presentation in August, we are working diligently to enhance that event model for downtown, to show that downtown remains active and to continue to activate it, especially during the DCRP. So our Special Events Division will continue to produce the monthly live concert series at the lot. It is requiring a shift for our public to understand that we've moved that venue space out of the amphitheater and not having those events in the evening. We are working to build that event back up at its new location. Glendale Glitters will continue in downtown during the DCRP project, shifting just one block east here to the Civic Center Plaza with some pretty unique features here for the 30th anniversary. And as we've shared previously, lights will be spread throughout all of downtown for the whole month of December again this year. We will also continue to hold the annual chocolate affair downtown, the downtown Glendale Arts and Culture Festival. And again, those provide opportunities to collaborate with our downtown businesses and bring visitors to downtown as well. And we continue to build on this model. That's why you see it say more to come. So we are working on more events, consistent events, in downtown, and we're going to keep making modifications, you know, as we go to make it better. One of the most successful outcomes, and that's where that bullet point at the bottom is, that we've noted already from activating the lot, was a proof of concept for private event producers. They have come out now in two months and seen what we're able to do on that lot and have definitely been looking to plan their own events in that space. And so we will have some events that will take place in November and then moving forward that are currently being planned that we're working with. And so it was several years ago that we brought the concept and introduced it to council for a downtown event funding program. And what that was, was taking a portion of the Special Events Division budget and allocating it to attract and facilitate events. And so we've been working on that program and using models from other cities that have done this successfully in order to attract high-quality and well-attended events through a funding program that we are looking to roll out very soon as well. That will help. So on this next slide, we're also going to be ramping up our marketing and promotion of downtown, and this is specifically during the DCRP to acknowledge that downtown is open for business. That'll include ads in print media and social media, and additionally, through our agreement with Local First, as I mentioned, that Small Wonders map. So that map is award-winning, and it features downtown businesses. Local First has done these for other communities. They distribute to their massive network digitally and in hard copy, and those local wonders map, the Small Wonder, sorry, from Local First, get a ton of media play as well. So it's a great opportunity for us to distribute those maps, and that's for any of our downtown businesses that choose to participate in the Small Wonders map. And then also important to acknowledge here, that we noted at the bottom of this slide is that these campaigns are all specific to the overall downtown district, and that's beyond the marketing and promotion of any of the events taking place in downtown. And so again, there will be a significant amount of marketing taking place that will keep downtown in the focus. Next, we thought it was important to also share the impact of both the construction workers and city employees here in downtown on a daily basis. During the construction, Oakland Construction will have about 50 to 100 construction workers onsite during the demo and construction phases each day. We will be working with Oakland to find tailored opportunities to have those workers patronize our businesses. It's important to note that the hours of construction for a project like this start early, so they start early in the morning, and they usually conclude by mid-afternoon. And so when a construction worker might be having lunch, might be outside of what those normal typical hours are, so we'll be communicating that with our businesses and finding those opportunities where they can adjust hours, and that we've also worked with Oakland to drive their construction workers into our businesses. And that's a conversation we've consistently had with Oakland so far. And then we wanted to add a little bit of context to the movement of city employees out of City Hall. So with the continuity of operations complete, we can share that only about 180 employees had their workplace moved out of downtown, while we still have over 400 city employees working in downtown on a daily basis. And that includes those customer service functions that bring both residents and visitors downtown to communicate with those city employees. And so I think it's really important for us to also acknowledge that while some employees have left from a, you know, a daily basis in downtown, there's still a significant amount of city employees operating, working in downtown, and that doesn't include all of the other employment that takes place in downtown, including the Bank of America Building that has over 100 employees operating in it that are state employees, as well as private office employees. And finally, on this last slide, we wanted to be sure to cover our communication plan throughout this project. So Oakland Construction will be providing consistent updated information on the project that will be distributed to the downtown community via the downtown weekly email blast that Daniel sends out. Should there be a need for a special bulletin or any immediate need to share a very quick response to our business community, that will go out via email, we'll do door-to-door communication on that, as well as any other way to reach our businesses. And scrim to provide contact information, as well as a QR code that will share the DCRP website that anyone can track the project at. DCRP website that anyone can track the project at. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions about any of the items here in the downtown business support plan.
We have to at least ask one question.
Yes, please.
So the 400 employees, are there 400 employees based downtown, or that are, you can be, on any given day, you can find 400 employees working downtown? And does that include the facilities ops on the other side of Grand Avenue?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that's a great question. So those are 400 employees that are actually based right here in downtown. So it includes our court, it includes the police main station, IT is also in there. It includes the Attorney's Office Code that are over in the Sign Building, it includes the library, it includes all of the employees that moved over to the Bead Museum Building and the Annex, it includes staff that would be here working, say, for instance, at the Civic Center. It includes our Special Events Division that is still downtown. And so all of those are city employees that are based down here on a daily basis and does not include field ops.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, thank you. Jesse, I asked because people ask me, would we characterize that this downtown project is on schedule, ahead of schedule, behind schedule?
So Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I don't know if I'm necessarily the best one to respond to that relative to the schedule. I do know that moving forward, and I believe the next month's update, you are going to be provided the site logistics and what that timeline looks like. For us, we continue to communicate with the downtown, you know, that the project continues to move forward. So I'm not sure if Mr. Phelps has a better answer than that.
I can appreciate that the scope, big picture, you may not know, but it does relate, and maybe I'll come back to you. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Turner, I would say we're certainly seeing a little bit of schedule slippage from, say, what we looked at a year ago. But my last report that I provided at our last meeting, where I laid out kind of the anticipated actions and presentations of the council, is still on schedule, and there'll be a lot of interaction happening in the month of November, which is just right around the corner.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask, and it does have to do with the special events, is that residents and business people have asked me, you know, if we still haven't closed down the Murphy Park and the amphitheater, why was it so important to cancel the band program and to move Murphy Live at Murphy Park, October events, out of Murphy Park when it would have provided a superior venue in their minds? And apparently, they tell me attendance has been lacking, not that we can't do something about that. I'm not trying to be critical of just making change, I'm just trying to, I need to have something I can report back to them. So here's the explanation for that.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I think if we knew for sure, we could have probably rewound the clock, we may have had a different schedule. But there was a lot to the move, including, for example, like just the storage of a lot of equipment that was used in the amphitheater. So we had to make a decision a number of months ago as to the timing of this. But again, we think that it's generally moving in the direction we want it to. We're still shooting for end of '24, excuse me, end of '25, opening for the downtown campus.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Yeah, let me shed some light a little bit on why we were not, because I had the same question, why aren't we having events at the amphitheater in October if we're not going to start construction? And I received an email and some text messages from former Mayor Elaine Scruggs, and she inquired with me about the band, the summer band, why the summer band wasn't being played. And so Mr. Phelps and I met several times on that, trying to make it happen. However, we found out, and I spoke with who is now the manager of the summer band, they didn't have a director, and they couldn't put together, assemble a band for this summer. And I asked them if they could try hard to do it. She said, yes. She came back and said to Mr. Phelps, and they could not have a band ready for summer and/or the fall. So we tried, and unfortunately, I wish we were able to, but I just wanted to shed some light, we really worked with them diligently to support them, and it just couldn't happen, and hopefully it'll come back sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so item three, which is now item four, is going to be presented by Mr. Stoddard, because Mr. Lee is running late.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. This item is a follow-up to the mayor's council item of special interest request that he had made back on May 9. If you recall, Mayor Wires requested a council item of special interest to explore state legislation that ensures reoccurring cancers cannot be the sole reason for denying a cancer claim and to ensure that reoccurring cancers that result in disability or in death are presumed to be occupational diseases as outlined in Arizona Revised Statute, which is where the law resides for the presumed cancer cases. Staff met with the mayor to scope out this item. If council direction is to move forward, this would be the deliverables from this council item of special interest. First, intergovernmental programs would work with the city's Human Resources Department, the Fire Department, and the Attorney's Office to identify and to begin drafting of the bill language, which would be presented to the legislature in next year's legislative session in 2024. Secondly, intergovernmental programs would coordinate with other peer cities, as well as the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, to identify a bill sponsor and to put together a legislative strategy for the passage of that bill for next session. Lastly, staff would also work with additional stakeholders that have an interest in this at the Capitol to ensure that there's adequate support for the legislation. As you know, as you're bringing forth a package, it's not just a single interest or a single idea, you build a coalition, you build a group of stakeholders, and so that would be also an additional deliverable from this. And so staff estimates that to carry this to completion, it would require an estimated 90 hours. That includes hours from multiple departments, including the work at the legislature to try to get this bill passed. So Mayor and Council, that's the scope of the work, and we would look for your direction of whether you want to continue with this council item of special interest as outlined.
Questions?
I have a question. I'm curious why this didn't sound like a good idea when I brought it up. I have the minutes from the meeting right here, where I brought up specifically recurrence. Mr. Phelps said that after September, there would be no, I can read it, but you can look for yourself, there would be no reason to have this conversation after September because the window would have been closed. I brought up, and I also think that the recurrence issue is lacking, because I also brought up that there are precancerous conditions that could be possibly a problem for somebody who had perhaps polyps from a colonoscopy, or there are a variety of precancerous conditions that could cause somebody to be excluded from a cancer claim because it can be considered a precancer condition. So I think this doesn't go far enough. And interestingly enough, Mayor Wires, after I brought up the idea of the recurrence, that it could be, actually, it has been a potential problem for one of our firefighters, because he had an issue, an episode, that could have been considered cancer before the actual diagnosis took place. And Mayor Wires said he did not believe it was necessary to have another discussion about a policy. I literally only asked for to bring it back for a discussion. There was three of us that were willing to do it, the rest of you were not. And he said that if anyone had any questions, they could just go to Mr. Brown or Mr. Phelps, and that everyone understood the law. So the important thing is that our firefighters are protected, that their health and safety are protected, but I think it's shameful to make a campaign issue out of the health and safety of our firefighters, and I believe that that's what this is. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I think you're confusing the minutes. So what I was referring to in that dialogue was that we administratively, here in the city of Glendale, had already made the decision with the concurrence of the council to not have this be an issue. What this specific effort is to do is to take the lead policy that the city of Glendale has done and to work with the state legislature to encourage all fire departments to do this. So there are two different things. We have already acknowledged our process, we are going to, you know, with regards to the reoccurring cancer. What Mr. Stoddard is talking about here is us going down and working with the legislature to try to make this a statewide approach and not department by department.
Mayor, if I could, please, there was an absolute refusal to have, I said, bring it back for a discussion, and it's in the minutes, you can read the minutes, to discuss the law. If the law was lacking, the state law, not our law, the state law was lacking in some areas to cover recurrence, it was part of the discussion, it's in the minutes, that the state law, it's not clear, in fact, one council member, I won't name him, but said that a recurrence was a new cancer. We had this absolute discussion about that the law, there's loopholes, I even used the word loophole in the state law, and that could have been part of the discussion to bring back whether the idea was, we need to pursue it through this angle. But there was no consensus to do that, because four people, I believe, had been told to snuff this out, that this was going to be handled within a week or two after that. There was a signing ceremony in the city manager's office to do a city policy, and literally, it just, I mean, I think it's shameful, the way it transpired, because our firefighters at the time thought that they were being dismissed. And like I said, the important thing is, is that this happens, I support it, but I do believe what you're moving forward is still missing part of what needs to happen, and that is including any kind of precancerous condition that is somebody has medically documented, which would be part of what they'd have to submit, that if you've had a colonoscopy and had polyps, there's lots of different precancerous conditions where you could be being monitored for something, but you have not been diagnosed with cancer, and that's a potential problem for a firefighter. And if we're going to do the grander scale of statewide, that should be part of this, not just the recurrence, but that if you have a precancerous condition that has not yet been diagnosed, you're still going to be protected. So I just, like I said, I see this for what I believe it is, and I think it's a campaign move. Thank you.
Mayor, Members of the Council, so again, I'm not running for campaign, we're just trying to do what the direction of the council, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, please. What we're trying to do is to do the consensus and the will of the council. We did not need to fix the state loophole for the city to adopt a policy on reoccurring cancer. We did not need a fix. What this is about is our leadership team said Glendale has been a leader in this state on jumping ahead of this issue, why don't we try to encourage the rest of the state to adopt this process? So we've already made our decision on how we are going to treat reoccurring cancer. If the state legislature does nothing with closing the loophole, it will not affect the city of Glendale's policy. We've already weighed in. This was really in working with our labor groups and working with our public safety leadership, we felt we were in a good position to go to the state legislature and to show them the loophole that's there and to try to get the entire state to adopt it. But we don't need it for us to do what the council has directed us to do.
Mayor?
That policy is already in place.
There was two parts to the council item of interest that I brought forward. One was to have a policy discussion, the second was to have a discussion about the law, the state law. That was part of the council item of special interest. There was a refusal to do either. So I didn't just say that we should have a discussion about whether or not we should have a policy, to have a discussion about and educate ourselves about the state law and where loopholes may exist. There was a refusal to have that discussion, that's the point I'm making.
Okay, we're not going to listen to this anymore. The fact is, is we are where we are, we're having a discussion, you either support it or you don't. I'm not going to allow any more discussion.
Are you going to add the part?
I'm not going to allow any more discussion on what happened months ago.
I'm going to ask a question.
Okay.
Are you going to add the part about a precancer?
Stop for a minute, I didn't give you permission to speak. Speak your turn, we're going to keep this a proper quorum.
I brought up an important point. This lacks the precancerous conditions, are we going to add that? If you're going to pursue this, I feel like it's important.
If we're having a discussion, you're welcome to bring that up during the discussion. Okay? We're having a discussion. If that's something that you want brought up, bring that up, and we'll do that also.
When are we going to have the discussion?
We're talking right now. I'm just saying, but you need to tone it down a little bit. It's not what happened six months ago or a year ago, it's what's happening today.
Fine.
Okay?
May I speak? May I finish?
Now you may start.
Thank you. This is, I believe, if you're going to pursue this, that it's lacking full-spectrum protection for our firefighters, and that includes somebody who has already been diagnosed with what could be considered a precancerous condition. I think it's important to include that. The important thing is that our firefighters are protected, which is what I was trying to do in the first place. But if we're going to pursue this, why would we leave another loophole in this law, where it doesn't say what happens if somebody has documented diagnosis of what could be considered a precancerous condition? It's not just a recurrence that could create a problem for somebody, it's that as well. And I think that it should be part of what you're moving forward if you're going to pursue either amending this law or changing the law, however you're going to actually pursue doing it. I think it's important, I'd like to know if there's a consensus to add that a precancerous condition, because it's part of somebody's medical record, and it could be a problem.
Understand. I'd like Mr. Lee to come up, discuss a couple of the options that we've already talked about, and some of the discussions he's had with firefighters, the unions, and then also some of the legislature.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Phelps, I apologize for being late, but we're here now. So just wanted to provide an update with you, and discussing with some of our stakeholders, other cities, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and also a meeting that I had this past week with Legislative Council, the attorneys who draft the legislation. From a technical perspective, there is a path forward. Now, politically, with the makeup of the legislature, that's not my place to make any promises in whether we can deliver the legislation, at least in the first year. But there's certainly, within the ability to write law, there's a way that we can address this, and it's at the point of, what we're evaluating right now with the Legislative Council, is it's at the point of the physical, right? So Councilmember Tomachoff, to your point of at that physical, you know, in the beginning phase, wanting to catch that early. Now, moving forward, what we need to do, and I'll provide an update at the Legislative Agenda presentation in November, is right now we need to find a bill sponsor. Finding a bill sponsor to carry this, it's a very heavy burden for a legislator. The previous legislators who have sponsored this legislation have gone at great lengths, even holding out on other important legislation to the state. So there is a lot of work to do, but between now and the second meeting in November, we will start to identify those legislators who can carry the water for us while working with other stakeholders who are invested in this interest.
Mr. Lee, would you agree that there seems to be a will amongst everybody to try to figure out a solution?
Almost everybody, yes. There are a couple of stakeholders who generally would oppose legislation like this. We can have discussions about that, I think, once we identify who those are, but majority cities, our firefighters associations, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, even the county, we've met with different stakeholders, and they all have a willingness and a desire to work with us on this legislation.
And we're moving forward, whether the league goes with this or not on this, correct?
So Mayor, Councilmembers, we did not submit a policy submittal to the state. One reason why is I felt like there wasn't enough information available. This item came forward while the policy committees were forming their agendas, and I just felt it was a little bit premature. That being said, because this has an impact on cities and towns, and there's a statewide impact, I do have a commitment from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns to help us with this.
You had a question?
Comment more, Mayor. I will say that I concur with the sentiments expressed by Councilmember Tomachoff, and under the protection of legislative debate, I have the right to speak out on what I think is an important issue here. And it's not just the issue of firefighter council, but also in the way that our council items of special interest are being desperately treated. I recently had one regarding a business plan for the amphitheater that was not handled at all according to our policy, even once it got to council. So there is something going on, and it does feel to me like it's campaign-related, and that there's collusion going on, and I say this under the protection of legislative debate. So I will support this, because I think that it mirrors the image and intent of Councilmember Tomachoff's council item of interest that I supported at the time, and I was at a loss for why anyone else wouldn't, and why we would be told that there was no need for a policy on this, and there was no need for us to have a discussion that might involve a statewide involve a statewide change in our statutes. And then less than two weeks later, as I recall, a policy was rolled out, addressing this very issue, these Councilmember Tomachoffs' very issues. And we weren't given the courtesy of being told it was happening, and we certainly should have been told during the time that we were discussing it in an open meeting, so that not only would we know, but the public would know as well. So I will support this, because it was what Councilmember Tomachoff introduced, both in, in spirit and, and in letter. And, and I think we all ought to be far more careful about any collusion between staff management and candidates about issues that may be relevant in campaigns, and trying to correct perhaps ill-advised positions that have been taken at the dais that would have implications down the road. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the mayor's initiative and the scope that's been presented to us. I think when you take something monumental and as consequential as, as this is, and the impact that it will have financially on all cities who support it, better you get your foot in the door and you get something passed that may not be exactly what you wanted, but at least it, it provides the base for further legislation down the road. So I do support this initiative that was brought forward by the mayor. And on a second note, is I'm going to look for a wine press so that I can present it to some people who need to press some sour grapes. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Want to read the part of the meeting minutes. Councilmember Clark said it was appropriate. She went on to say it had safeguards for the city. However, she did not believe in a blanket policy approving claims for cancer. She was not interested in moving forward. Councilmember Tomachoff brought this item up of interest, and it was absolutely appropriate then, and it was absolutely appropriate today. Had we all on this dais just agreed and gave consensus, we would have already been done with this, and you would have been at your work already. You would have been working with legislators and trying to find a bill, someone to carry the water for us. However, that didn't happen. It is, in my opinion, inappropriate and unprofessional for a council member to, to deny a council member of item of interest from another one, and then take credit for it months later, and ask for the same item of interest, but change it a little bit. And that's what Mayor Wires did, and it is inappropriate, it is unprofessional, it is uncalled for, and it divides this council. So I thank Councilmember Tomachoff for working on this issue for our firefighters, and we did have an individual who passed away on the, on Glendale Fire, and I had a conversation with the mayor, and it wasn't a really good one. And no, he didn't support it, and others didn't support it, neither did the city manager. And I asked, yes, I asked you, sir, to cover Mark, I asked you to cover him, and you said no. I asked the mayor in his office, he and I, and he declined. I asked the mayor if he would have a meeting, call a special meeting, so we can have this discussion, and he declined. All of a sudden, this is a great idea. It is a great idea, but it, it divides this council when what happened, happens. Councilmember Tomachoff had the fortitude to bring this up, because she cares, she has empathy. Thank you.
Mayor, I can wrap up here. If directed to move forward with this item, staff will immediately begin working with stakeholders. As I had mentioned previously, we will also conduct our legislative outreach, not only to our legislators, but also to Governor Hobbs's office as well, as we understand that she, her signature is ultimately required. Intergovernmental programs will also be working, again, to find a bill sponsor, and will work with our contract lobbyist for Strategic. And I will provide an update to the City Council on November 28th, when we present our 2024 Proposed Legislative Agenda. That I stand for questions.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a consensus, move forward?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. Yes, okay, there you go.
Mine wasn't good enough.
Okay, City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Members of the Council, as you're aware, the Department of Housing and Urban Development works with housing authorities and agencies all across the country, and they have a program designed to kind of call out those agencies that do, that outperform kind of the standard that they're used to working with. And we recently, our, our Department of Community Services recently received what's called the high performer status from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Out of the 18 housing authorities here, just in the state of Arizona, only four of these authorities were able to achieve 100% utilization of the special allocation of emergency housing vouchers for the homeless and households. Glendale was one of those four. And so again, this, this was a priority of the council, was to try to accelerate the, getting the money as quickly as possible into the hands of our citizens and homes that were needing that. And recently, that, that good work was acknowledged by the federal government, and so just, I wanted to congratulate our team there for job well done. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report?
No report, thank you.
Council Items of Special Interest, Councilmember Aldama?
None at this time.
Councilmember Hugh?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Milner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, as we're getting ready to, I think we've got our first five-year forecast coming, probably only maybe six or eight weeks away, I mean, we're getting close to the end of the year. And I had a constituent bring to my attention that we were, we did use, and actually, we've been publishing in every budget book since then, a CIP scoring matrix that we use, and we had, were provided by staff at one time, the yellow fold-out sheet, and it was actually an interactive document, where you could put things in and take things out, and kind of see how you, putting something in affects the other end of the budget. And I'd like to bring back a discussion, and it was decided, that process was dismissed, I was told, because the, the matrix wasn't working. We could adjust the matrix. I'd like to know whether the council would like to be able to bring back a scoring matrix for CIP projects, so they scored on merit and whatever criteria we decide to use, as we're rolling into the budget season, that we could categorize and prioritize our CIP projects in a, in a uniform manner. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
I would just like to note that in this discussion we just had regarding the mayor CIOSI, that Councilmembers Tomachoff and Aldama and myself made a point to keep our remarks on message, and dealing with the question at hand, and the policies and implications of it. And I'm deeply disappointed that Councilmember Clark insisted on making her comments personal, derogatory, and maybe I need to look and see whether that's a violation of our code of ethics or our code of conduct. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me read this one more time, so everybody understands that. Council Items of Special Interest Agenda, as Council Items of Special Interest, each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics they'd like to have discussed by this council at a future workshop. That's all it is, folks, that's all we're talking about.
If I may respond, Mayor, I'm just following your lead, you use this period of time for comments, not items of interest, all the time.
Again, that's all this is.
All the time. So if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, live with it.
You're out of line. Vice Mayor?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, and I have nothing myself. Motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion, hearing, and all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council meeting is recessed.